All right, good evening. The meeting is called to order. It's a joyous day. We have a return of a colleague, Councilwoman Robert Corbett. It's the regular council meeting of April 23rd, 2018. The time is 7:30. And we have roll call.
Mayor Potemblis?
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Councilman Geddings?
Here.
Councilor Graffstein?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell?
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise for an invocation to be given by Councilman David Soltis and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Tonight, I'd like to quote from a heroic advocate for children's rights, Marian Wright Eldaman. "God, please help us remember that all the darkness in the world cannot snuff out the light of one little candle. Help us keep lighting our little candles until a mighty torch of justice sweeps our nation and the world." So much of America's tragic and costly failure to care for all its children stems from our tendency to distinguish between our own children and other people's children as if justice were divisible. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Right, hearing none. We have three presentations this evening, and the first one is for the National Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day proclamation. Mr. Myers?
Yes, I'd be happy to read the proclamation, Your Honor. Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than a billion pounds of food has been collected. And whereas the Madison Heights City Council would like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and commitment to their communities, noting that all of the food collected in the community stays in the community, and the council supports carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. And whereas the city council recognizes the noteworthy milestone of 26 years that the National Letter Carrier Food Drive celebrates in 2018. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council proclaims May 12th, 2018, as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day in the city of Madison Heights, and encourages the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items near their mailboxes on Food Drive Day, Saturday, May 12th, 2018. I believe Mr. Potzorski is here from the post office.
Thank you. Would you please accept this proclamation on the city's behalf?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, guys. I appreciate everybody's attention. The microphone in the middle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, if you'd like to give us some remarks, please. You're welcome to.
My name is Guy Potzorski, and I'm a letter carrier in Madison Heights. I have been a letter carrier now for over 30 years. And as a letter carrier, once a year, we attempt throughout the whole nation to try to stamp out hunger. What happens is the food pantries from the holidays, when Christmas holidays, they get somewhat depleted around this time of the year. So the National Association of Letter Carriers, along with the Postal Service, has united together to help people out to stamp out hunger, not just in Madison Heights, but throughout the country. I would like to thank the people of Madison Heights in the past for their generosity, and I hope to see a continuation of their generosity. All that I ask is that if you could just leave non-perishable food, canned food, noodles, dried food packages, unopened, at your mailbox. We will be delivering plastic bags sometime in the near future to every resident. With this plastic bag, there'll be a postcard that states when the food drive is, which is May 12th on Saturday. So if you fill the bag up, or if you want to use boxes, or whatever you want to put into any kind of container, just all you have to do is leave it at the mailbox, and we will collect it. The Postal Service has the ability to reach every person through their addresses in the United States. And I'm looking forward to collecting food from the generous citizens of Madison Heights as we have in the past. And this goes towards a lot of people who are living maybe one paycheck away from a misfortune. For example, some people, like even seniors, let's say senior citizens, they've been, they get Medicaid, Medic Aid, yes, Medic Aid with their health, along with a supplemental health insurance. But as a letter carrier, talking to different people, I noticed that a lot of the senior citizens which live on fixed incomes have got increases in their supplemental health care, which a lot of people didn't consider. They didn't think about, but this is an added cost that depletes their fixed income. So please, if you can just be very generous with the food, and we can get the food banks filled up, the food that we collect will go to Salvation Army up on 13 Mile Road. They will box it for us. We'll pick it up for you, and then it will make sure that the food kitchens will be replenished until, you know, later date. Thank you, Mayor Hartwell. Thank you, City Council. And I would like to also send out a special thanks to you, City Manager Benjamin Myers, for without your help, this proclamation would not be possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Potzorski. The next presentation this evening is the 2018 Police Officers Memorial Week proclamation. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Police Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Madison Heights Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Madison Heights. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the Madison Heights Police Department has grown to be a modern and professional law enforcement agency that provides vital public service. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council call upon the citizens of Madison Heights and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe May 13th through the 19th, 2018, as Police Week, to commemorate police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal dedication to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving rights and security of all citizens. Be it further resolved that May 15, 2018, be observed as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those police officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And Your Honor, I believe Lieutenant Fecto is here to see me.
Lieutenant, would you accept this, please?
Say hello to Becky for me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. We have a third presentation this evening. It's the April 2018 Child Abuse Prevention Month. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. Whereas nationally, it is estimated that more than 1,540 children die each year from child abuse and neglect. And whereas both statewide and nationally, child abuse is considered to be one of the most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse and neglect of children, and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. And whereas according to the Children's Trust Fund in the state of Michigan, in 2017, 26,017 or 29% of the 90,760 confirmed complaints of child abuse resulted in evidence or abuse of neglect, or abuse or neglect, with almost 38,000 identified victims. Forty percent of the victims were under the age of four, and in approximately 82% of the cases, the perpetrator was a parent. And whereas promoting family functioning and resiliency, social support systems, concrete supports, nurturing and attachment, and knowledge of parenting and child development are all known protective factors which prevent child maltreatment and help estranged families. And whereas child abuse prevention is an acknowledged community responsibility, on behalf of Madison Heights's children, this month and each month thereafter, we join with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Children's Trust Fund to commit to the power of one. This statewide initiative under the leadership of the Children's Trust Fund asserts that the power of one person, one community, one dollar, one action during April will help to protect children from abuse and neglect. Now therefore, the Madison Heights City Council does hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Madison Heights.
All right, thank you, Mr. Myers. Dave, this is your idea. Would you accept this proclamation and be sure it's exhibited in an appropriate location?
I will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Continue.
All right, thank you, Councilman Soltis. That concludes our presentations for the evening. There are no public hearings. So per our tradition, we have the meeting open to the public segment at the beginning of the meeting. And so I'd invite anyone who'd like to address the city council on any subject to do so now. It's not required, but it'd be helpful if you could give your name, an address, or affiliation. But meeting is open to the public. You're welcome to come up. Hello.
Hello. My name's Gloria Moore, 27368 Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights area senior citizens is having another third Tuesday meeting, May 15th, over at Wilkinson. Snacks and beverages are on us, and everyone is welcome. The other paper that we have here, ignore the bottom because that already happened, that the Madison Carnival is April 26th through the 29th. Thursday Friday, the after-school. Saturday, it's from noon to 11:00. Sunday, noon to 8:00. And from what I understand, it's, a lot of people like it. I'll be at one of the vendor's tables. And Wayne's going to be talking about the bowling fundraiser. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Moore. Address 27368 Dartmouth Street. Friends of Madison Heights senior citizens fundraiser is at Bowl One. Twenty dollars per person and five dollars for pizza and pop for those that don't want to bowl. From 7:00 until, we've got 50/50 raffle. Myers sponsored five $100 gift cards to raffle off, and the PTO is coming up a gift basket.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Moore. Address 27368 Dartmouth Street. Friends of Madison Heights senior citizens fundraiser is at Bowl One. Twenty dollars per person and five dollars for pizza and pop for those that don't want to bowl. From 7:00 until, we've got 50/50 raffle. Myers sponsored five $100 gift cards to raffle off, and the PTO is coming up a gift basket.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I am Sean Fleming, and I live at 27120 Barrington Street here in Madison Heights. I passed out two pieces of information here. One is a memo or a press release from the Secretary of State's office on a business that was here at 530 West 11 Mile Road by the name of Car Hunters Retail LLC. Currently, the dealership, which was a used car dealership, is no longer in business, and a new business has taken over there. But the previous owner is in some type of criminal issues going on, okay? So I had a complaint myself with the Secretary of State's office about this dealer, and that's how I found out about that. But I also thought about FOing the license, the business license. So I did so, and that is this email attachment that I have from the clerk. And so I noticed that the name of the registered business is not the same as the business that was doing business there at 530 West 11 Mile Road. My suggestion to maybe not let these things happen again, so that we have a business operating with a license and one name, and a state license as a car dealership and another name, is to possibly, when applying for business license, request that a copy of their corporation's certificate from the state to include their DBAs be provided to the city. That way that you'd be able, instead of the clerk having to search it up, that the city could then compare what they have on their business application to what their state license is, and even you could even cross-reference that when the building department is signing away on their Ottawa dealership license for the zone. So that's what I have there for that. Secondly, Councilman Soltis had mentioned to me, I'm a member of the VFW. I'm also the past commander of the VFW that was here in Madison Heights. And we do not, no longer have a building, and we're meeting in Ferndale right now. We merged with Ferndale a long time ago. And, but personally, myself, I wanted to see if we could start a committee, a veterans' committee, that would explore programs for the city that would, you know, help out veterans and enhance the benefits that we can help them out and whatnot. I truly believe that Madison Heights has a community of veterans. I see them at parades, like the Memorial Day parade that occurs. But I think they're kind of maybe shy of some things. I don't, I don't know why, but so that's...
Modest. I find that they're modest, not shy, but modest of their...
Modest, yeah. So that's, that's all I have today.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject? All right, no one's asked to be recognized, so we'll close meeting to the public. Thank you. There are no communications tonight. However, we have three reports. And so Item D1 is from the DPS director. It's regarding the Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant for Wildwood Park. Mr. Myers, can you begin with the report?
Yes, I can, Your Honor. In March of 2017, city council approved the required resolution to apply for a $75,000 Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant to replace the playground at Wildwood Park. This project was approved in the fiscal 2018 budget with an additional $47,875 in carried-forward funds to replace the aged playground equipment and appurtenances, and improve accessibility in Wildwood Park. The budgeted city funds, along with in-kind labor, will provide the required local match for the state grant. On January 12th, the Department of Natural Resources awarded the $75,000 Recreation Passport Grant for Wildwood Park, and staff and I accordingly would recommend that council adopt the resolution to implement the MDNR Recreation Passport Grant for Wildwood Park Improvements Project. This resolution is required to accept the terms of the agreement and commit to the local match.
Thank you. Should we have a motion first? Okay. Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council adopt the recommended resolution, accepting the terms of the agreement and local match relative to the MDNR grant for Wildwood Park, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Second.
Thank you. There was a motion that was seconded to adopt the recommended resolution from staff regarding Wildwood Park. Is there any discussion for members of city council? Okay. Hearing no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next report is Item D2, also from the DPS director regarding the Clinton River Watershed Council's Water Towns Program. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. Before I introduce Ms. Anne Braze, who's the executive director with Clinton River Watershed, I do have a short report. Through the Red Run Sub-Watershed, Madison Heights is part of the Clinton River Watershed, and we've been a member of the Clinton River Watershed Council for many years. Last January, the council approached staff regarding their Water Towns program, which is an initiative designed to assist the Clinton River Watershed Council with their mission of protecting, enhancing, and celebrating the Clinton River, its watershed, and Lake St. Clair by assisting towns and cities in leveraging the assets of the river and Lake St. Clair for water-oriented community and economic development. As noted in the staff report, although the city, like many communities in the watershed, does not directly encroach on the Clinton River or Lake St. Clair, protecting the health of these waterways is of regional importance from an environmental, economic, and recreational standpoint. To that end, in 2014, and I apologize if I'm stealing some of your thunder here, at 2014, the Water Towns program began a partnership with Lawrence Tech Great Lakes Stormwater Management Institute to focus on green infrastructure to reduce runoff into the stormwater system. A partnership was also founded with the Fred A. and Barbara M. Irv Family Foundation. These resources allow Water Towns communities to receive assistance with the planning and implementation of green infrastructure projects, including identifying potential opportunities, conceptual site plans and renderings, stormwater reduction estimates, cost estimates, and funding assistance for projects. The Water Towns program focuses on city facilities or future city projects, examples of which are planned in our five-year 2019 to 2023 capital improvement plan. One of these projects is a parking lot improvement at the entire Civic Center Plaza, which is programmed for three years of funding from fiscal 2020 through fiscal 2022. The Water Towns team will assist us with green infrastructure planning and provide implementation strategies, concept site plans and renderings, stormwater reduction estimates and cost estimates for this project, all at no cost to the city. Additionally, areas like Civic Center and Rosie's Parks will be analyzed for smaller-scale stormwater reduction projects where a $5,000 mini-grant will be available to the city from the CRWC. The closest Water Towns communities to Madison Heights are currently Troy, Huntington Woods, Centerline, and Sterling Heights. Membership in the Water Towns initiative requires no financial commitment, but, as I mentioned, provides a number of benefits, and would reflect the city's historical commitment to the protection of the Clinton River watershed. Passage of a resolution by council is required to become a Water Towns community. Staff and I recommend that council adopt the resolution declaring Madison Heights a participant in the Water Towns initiative, and Ms. Braze is here from the Watershed Council to give a short PowerPoint presentation and answer any questions regarding the program. If you give me just 30 seconds to set up the computer, we'll be ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
You can choose either, you know, either microphone, whatever's just easier on your, whatever angle you want.
Yeah.
Welcome. Could you please identify yourself?
Anne Braze with the Clinton River Watershed Council.
Thank you. Welcome to Madison Heights.
Thank you. My second trip here since I moved here. I've been on the job for five months, so I'm pitch-hitting for our watershed planner who is like nine point something or eight point 999 months pregnant and wasn't feeling well today, so... This first-up slide shows where we have current Water Towns. I actually think it might be slightly out of date because we have Royal Oak now, and then, of course, it doesn't show. We have two folks that are pending right now. But two of the communities that are similar to yours in that they are not directly on the river are Huntington Woods and Centerline, and we do have a large project with Centerline where we sought out the grant funds on their behalf, so, and that's being funded with Section 319 money. So hit next slide. So this is a little bit of a reiteration, which was in the report, but basically, Water Towns incorporates green infrastructure planning and design into a variety of things. It's not just about the green infrastructure. It's related to our blue economy efforts in the state, people having access to water and people having access to nature. Even small projects can generate a lot of interest and help build local businesses. Bike trails and things like that are certainly related to this. It helps reduce stormwater volume, so for permities, you know, MPDES permities, it can be very helpful with keeping flows down by allowing nature to remedy the situation rather than have all the water go into giant pipes that cost lots of money, way more than a rain garden. Next slide. For Madison Heights, we just had a meeting a few weeks ago to introduce all of ourselves, and we had our consultant, his name is Don Carpenter, and he works with a couple other folks that, we basically discussed some of the options here on the city's campus, and I think a couple other spots where we might do implementation in city parks. We do provide a $5,000 mini-grant once a project's selected, but throughout that entire process, we're walking side by side with the city staff, helping with the planning. We provide site plans that are actionable for grant applications. This has been a big boost for, like, St. Clair Shores, for example, is a Water Town and their first project has now, they're currently applying or in the application, submitting, have submitted an application for SOGAL funds to do additional work. And so we help them with that application, and then we'll be part of the project if it gets funded in terms of doing public education. So there's a lot of creative ways to take this initial piece and springboard into other projects and other sources of funding. Section 319 allows a lot of green infrastructure funding, and so do several other larger grant programs. So Madison Heights, you know, we had a pretty creative discussion, I think we'll just stay up, about how to utilize some of the funding that you're already allocating for possibly redoing parking lots and things like that. So, next slide. Here's just a couple of examples. Huntington Woods, this is sort of your traditional sidewalk configuration, and then the next slide shows what you can do with pervious pavers, and then also the, they're called treebox trenches, where water is then, it's designed so water drains into these trenches and then basically infiltrates into the ground, or in some cases, it might, there might be overflow structures underneath if there's too much rain. But that's, it's, not only makes the sidewalk area look nicer, but helps with the stormwater. And this is, of course, a traditional sort of setup with the tree and the little, I don't know what you call that, but anyway, next slide will show what it would look like with the green infrastructure. And I think this is a rendering, not an actual thing that has been done, but you'll see where there's native plantings, and there's different means of getting the stormwater up the street into this bio swale, and then the water infiltrates into the ground, where not only keeps it out of the storm sewer systems, which is helpful in high-flow events, but then also Mother Nature does a pretty good job of cleaning itself if she's given the opportunity. So when you can infiltrate stormwater into the ground, it's, the earth has the ability to heal itself to some extent. Next slide. This is just an example of, Clinton Township has really dove into the green infrastructure process with both feet, and they had a similar impetus for what you're looking at, because they had a parking lot that was in desperate need of repair. And so they decided to incorporate green infrastructure into the redoing of the entire parking lot at their Civic Center, and put in some swales in the parking lot, and then they also redid the shoreline of this pond that's on the property with native plantings. We've helped them with some of the education, because sometimes the native plantings are, the DPW folks are, they don't know how to maintain them. People are concerned, well, I can't access the pond. Well, the pond's a lot cleaner and requires a lot less maintenance when it's surrounded by native plants. In the parking lot, they've, they've done some training to help their DPW staff learn how to maintain the native plantings that are in the swales. Plus, it looks a lot better. Next slide. Oh, that's the end. You have less slides than I have. Great. So I'm pretty new here, but I can answer a couple of questions if you have, or if you have any specifics.
Well, that's great. Let me first ask, is there a motion for city council to bring this to the table?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Graffstein?
I would like to recommend that we adopt the resolution declaring Madison Heights to be a participant in the Water Towns initiative.
Very well. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I support.
Thank you. A motion was made, it was seconded, to adopt the proposed resolution that declares Madison Heights a participant in the Water Towns initiative. Is there discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I find this very timely. What, a month ago, yourself and the city manager and I, along with a few other people from DPS, were in the, in our dream. We were looking through some of that in the basin. And last week, I was at a Keep Michigan Beautiful luncheon. I'm sorry, I don't know if you were there. There were a lot of people. Okay. There were a lot of people there. But this is just very timely, because a lot of this has, and of course, we're resurrecting the Environmental Committee, so a lot of these things are all coming into play right now. We can use green initiatives... We can use green initiatives, we can use the trees, we can use the native gardens to help with the water, and myself, as well as many other people over the last few weeks have had extra water in our backyards and our front yard, so something like this would be, would be great, so I'm definitely all for this. Thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
You know, our city finds a lot of value in the opinions from members of the public, and I think this could be a good project for the Environmental Citizens Committee to sink its teeth into. Similar to how, you know, theoretically this Community Development Block Grant Review Committee would work. It may slow things down a little bit on approving these projects, however, I think it'd be great for members of the public to chew into this and, you know, really find an interesting way to spend, or first of all, to apply and then spend this grant money if we're successful. But thank you very much for attending our meeting, it's really exciting, and the slides are very interesting, it really makes it, those are attainable goals. Any other discussion from members of city council? All right, let's vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We can move on to the next report. Good evening, thank you for coming, we'll see you again. Item D3 on our agenda is also from the DPS director, and it's regarding the drug and alcohol testing policy from SMART. Mr. Myers?
Yes, your honor, the city has recently been made aware that the Federal Transit Administration, or FTA, will be conducting an audit of SMART. Part of this audit includes a review of the city's drug and alcohol testing policy for our safety-sensitive employees who are our senior center drivers and our DPS drivers that hold the commercial driver's license. As a community partner and funding recipient of SMART's programs, the city is required to update and provide a current drug and alcohol policy that meets the Department of Transportation's and FTA regulation requirements. While city employees are covered under the Drug Free Workplace Act of 1988 and our related city policy, and safety-sensitive employees at the senior center and DPS are already covered under the current drug testing procedure, the regulations require the city to have completed the FTA's policy builder pool, which is being recommended now by SMART. The policy meets all requirements under the FTA, and the only change to the city's operations is that candidates for safety-sensitive positions must undergo an alcohol test in addition to the existing physical and drug screen. This policy will not change the city's operations or testing procedures for current employees. Staff and I recommend that council approve this policy so that we may submit our official policy to SMART in compliance with their regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, what's the wish to city council?
Ms. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
I move that council approve this policy so that we may submit our official policy to SMART in compliance with their regulations.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you, there is a motion and a second to approve this drug and alcohol testing policy so that we may submit the policy to SMART in compliance with their regulations. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
An opposed, say no. The motion carries. We can skip ahead in our agenda to minutes. Can I please have a motion to adopt the minutes as printed from the regular meeting of 4/9/18?
Your honor?
Yes, sir?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss, is there a second?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Scott. Are there any corrections to the minutes as printed? Our hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right, are there any nominations to boards and commissions this evening from members of city council? I don't have any notes to vote on anything tonight.
There's a senior.
Is there? Is that a mayor's appointment?
No.
Okay, so there's a, an applicant named, you know, I don't know her, Tamara Kulak, and she's applied to the citizen, the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, I'm assuming she was passed by the board itself.
Yes, and she was in attendance at the last meeting on Tuesday.
Fantastic, so, Ms. Scott, are you comfortable nominating Tamara Kulak? It's not a mayor's appointment, it would be yours.
Yes.
To, it'd be a three-year term on the senior board, expiring June 2020.
Yes, I will nominate Tamara Kulak for a three-year term on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, and spiting, and expiring, I'm sorry.
June 1st, 2020.
June 1st of 2020.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Graffstein?
Support.
Thank you, there was a motion and a second to appoint Tamara Kulak to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board for a three-year term. The term will expire June 1st, 2020. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It carries, thank you, Ms. Scott, for bringing that to our attention. Any other nominations this evening? Okay, well, we can move on, there's no executive session planned, so before we adjourn, I'd invite closing comments from members of council and staff, and first of all, a very warm welcome to our colleague, Robert Corbett, welcome back, sir, and you may begin closing comments.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, good to be back, I'm doing a lot better tonight than I was four weeks ago tonight, but, but I just want to thank everybody for their, the notes and words of encouragement and prayers, it meant an awful lot, and I don't recommend this surgery to anyone, but if you've got to get it, I could recommend Beaumont, it's having been a pretty good place to get the surgery. It's funny where you meet some of your constituents, a couple of the ladies who were coming in to take blood work said, oh, I recognize you, I said, well, I was hoping you wouldn't at the moment, but, but I do want to publicly acknowledge Dr. Mark Sakwa, and who's the chief of cardiovascular surgery at Beaumont, and his team. You know, I don't have a lot to compare to, the last time I spent a night in the hospital, Lyndon Johnson was president, and that's true, so I don't, don't have a lot to go over on that, but I will tell you that without exception, everybody from the nurses assistants to the physicians and the doctors were terrific, they're professional, and I could not possibly have been better treated, and, and thank you very much to everybody over there. I've been released from all of my restrictions, much to the chagrin of my wife, who isn't really sure about that, of course, she was never sure about my condition, but I've got a couple of months of rehab ahead of me, but, but other than that, I'm doing well, so thank you very much for everything, and glad to be back. Only other thing I was going to mention was, well, a couple of things, actually, I am back at the library, so if there's anybody who'd like to stop by and chew over anything related to the city, I am there on Fridays from 1:00 to 3:00, and of course, if that's not a convenient time, or you'd like to talk on the phone, you can contact myself or any member of council, for that matter, through the, through the manager's office, and we'll get back with you as soon as we can. And, oh, one other item I was going to mention, while I was out, there was a newspaper article related to, related to the issue of, the responsibility of owners of hotels and motels who were in, possibly, who had had things going on at their site. I wanted to thank Councilman Soltes for his, his interest in that project. It's something that I want to be careful, though, that we, I have been talking about it for a while with staff over a period of time, but I want to acknowledge that a number of the people who own the, these facilities, the business owners and so on, are very cooperative, they're good citizens, and in no way do we, are we looking to impinge upon them. The only thing I would say, though, and my, my thought on it was, is that depending on the circumstance, depending on the incident, it would be something that our legal team would have in their toolbox if it seemed necessary. But as I said, we, the chief has told me that there are even cases of owners who come in on a regular basis to discuss what's going on, and that's the kind of thing we want to encourage and stand with, so. Whatever is a result of these discussions, that work product, of course, will be forwarded to council in a timely way, and then we will, we will move forward and discuss it as a group later on. That's all I have this evening, sir, thank you, and glad to be back.
Thank you, very good. Mayor Protem Bliss?
Yes, your honor, yeah, I was, I was also maybe a little bit caught off guard in, you know, with that newspaper article, I definitely want a, a legal review, I think that there are aspects of that that may be challenging to legislate around, and I love the idea, I love, you know, the, I guess, the heart of it, but I think that it would be very challenging to do, and you also have to want, you have to make sure that you don't ruin relationships with the owners whose help we need to be able to catch those criminals. So it's a balancing act, I'm sure city staff is going to go through a, a deep analysis of it, you know, the need is certainly there, but how we execute to that, I'm, I'm very curious as to what staff will recommend after going through a legal review, and also after reviewing with the police department and hopefully Crime Commission, so we can get some real recommendations and, you know, have a 360-degree view of the issue. Also want to welcome Councilman Corbett back, we did our best to keep things going, it's great that you're here now, we can get, get into the real work of the budget coming up, and it's, you know, great that you're back for that. Lastly, I wanted to thank everybody who was involved in the active shooter drill at Landfair over the weekend, it was, I mean, it's sad that, that we need to do things like that in today's day and age, so I will, I will preface it with that, it is, you know, terribly tragic that that had to take place, but as a parent, I feel better that it did. You know, I am truly thankful for all of the public safety employees and the students in the Landfair Drama Club who made that possible, it was a great success, everybody involved, from my understanding, learned a lot, and it also raised awareness, and, and all of those things are absolutely impactful, and, you know, we're going to take that forward, so thank you to everybody involved in that.
Thank you, Councilman Geddings?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just want to welcome Councilman Corbett back, I'm glad he's recovering well, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Mayor, a couple, couple of the same comments that have already been made, one, welcome back to Councilman Corbett, making a wonderful recovery, and kudos to the doctors and staff at Beaumont Hospital who treated him, and I echo those compliments. I want the mayor and council to be aware of the fact that staff has immediately jumped on the issue raised by Councilman Soltes relating to the, to the, some concerns we have that are occurring at our hotels and motels in the city, and we're looking at it from a variety of angles, and, and so council will get a, will ultimately get a report from legal and from staff with some options as to how to, what things to consider before moving forward in those top, on those issues. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, city manager, Mr. Myers?
Just to, just to echo the other comments, I want to welcome Councilman Corbett back, his blood pressure is now better than mine, so, I think I'm a way to have to get there, but.
Good medicine.
Yeah, yes, as, as the city attorney said, we are looking at the hotel issue, police department, department is involved, legal, and have opened it up to all the department heads to, to give us some brainstorming ideas as to how to, how to address it and give lots, a lot of options, so, that's all, your honor.
Thank you, city clerk, Ms. Prince?
I just wanted to say welcome back to Councilman Corbett.
Very good, thank you. Councilor Graffstein?
I've got a couple of things, a few people have contacted me directly regarding free little libraries, there is on the city website a link that gives you the information about the little libraries and just an idea of how to build them. Ultimately, if you want to put one up at your home, you can do that, and if you want to put one into the park, you can build one and you can give it to the city, but the city is who puts it into the park. Last year, when my Girl Scout troop built one, we delivered it to the city and DPS installed it for us, so just a heads up, because I've had, now that it's spring supposedly, people are out, and it seems to be getting traction again, so, Mr. Vitale, you may be getting some calls about that, so heads up on that, and just anyone who is interested, there seem to be a lot of people who, who do want to, who do want to be involved in that. With the human trafficking, so the article came out on Wednesday, and on Tuesday at the Crime Commission, we discussed this, and everyone on the Crime Commission walked out with a copy of the Baton Rouge ordinance. I don't know if that has made its way to the city attorney or not, the idea was we were going to all take a look at it and come back as Crime Commission to discuss it and vote on it in June. That may be redundant at this point because it seems like many of council are talking about it, but just to give people an idea of the ordinance we're looking at, and that is not specifically what we're looking at for our city, it's the template that, that was, that I found to work off of. The idea is someone wants to set up a hotel, you need to get a specific hotel or motel permit, and then if the police are called because of prostitution or because of drugs, and they're called three times within three months, and this is a specific ordinance, ours wouldn't necessarily be the same, but it's the idea, if they're called because of prostitution or because of drugs, they will lose their permit, and if you lose your permit, you have about 48 hours to vacate all the rooms, so in essence, the police would, it would be shut down because you would lose your permit. Now, the catch with that is if the hotel employee is the one who calls, so that means that they're on the side of the police and they're on the side of the law. The issue that seems to be happening a lot, and I don't know that it's specifically happening here, but what's happening in a lot of cities is the employees are not cooperating and they are on board with the quote-unquote "bad guys," and so they're just turning the other way, and they're not reporting things, and so they're not being held liable, so I would suggest that anything that we do would be similar, whatever the, the numbers that we're using, you know, a good chance that they would vary, but the idea is the hotel employees would now be accountable, and if the police are getting called, they lose their permit, they close down, and they have to start again, they have to reapply for their permit, so just to give people a bit of clarification there, unfortunately, we are never going to completely get rid of the drugs, we are never going to completely get rid of the prostitution or the human trafficking, but what we can do is we can work to, to let people know that it is not welcome here. So just to give Councilman Corbett and everyone a peace of mind, we're not suggesting that, you know, every hotel is going to get shot down, shut down because there's some kind of domestic squabble or something that's taking place, or someone goes there and decides they're going to use drugs, well, we're shutting it down automatically, we're looking at having something where it's routine and it's obvious that this specific establishment has an issue. And again, yes, the, the police are going to be looking into it, and city attorneys are looking into it, and Crime Commission is already taking a look at it. Kind of along those lines, on Friday, I was in Royal Oak with a number of Royal Oak council, and Congressman Levin was there, and it was the student rally, and it was protesting or advocating, I don't even know what anymore, it was advocating responsible gun ownership. And of course, this Friday was the day after we had a horrific shooting in our own city right by one of our schools. What was interesting, and Councilman Bliss just made this comment, that he's, you know, as, as much as he didn't like the fact that these students were participating in the active shooter drill, he's got kids, I have kids, you know, this is their reality, and what struck me on Friday, the Columbine tragedy was 19 years ago, 19 years ago, I was out of school. But the kids who were speaking, and they were kids, they were 14, 15, 16, 17 years old, Columbine has always been there for them, you know, they grew up, and they grew up knowing that when you get to high school, there was a high school where these kids got shot, there was a high school where students walked in and just started shooting. This is the reality of our children, and I don't know, I don't know what city council can do, I think this is a much higher issue than something at, at the city level, but I do think that, that we do need to support responsible gun ownership, we do need to support the programs that identify and that we follow up if there is someone that the school suspects, that family suspects, that other students suspect this is a credible threat, so. So, that's, that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, I'm very glad you're back in, in Council here. And I never realized how many motions you made until you weren't here, but you do.
What she's saying is I've got a big mouth.
No, no. You may have a big mouth, but when you open it, it, a lot of good comes out of it, so I want to thank you. I also want to, everybody forgot to say thank you to your caretaker, Linda, your wife, who I know was very communicative with everybody that was so worried about you, and so I want to thank her for all the time that she spent notifying us that you were doing well and for taking care of you, and wish you good luck in rehab. It's a long process, but you'll see progress amazingly. It's the best thing you can do. I would also like to say a big congratulations to the Madison Heights Women's Club, who were at the national, I'm sorry, the state convention last week, and there were 14 of them that went. It was in Big Rapids, so it was a little ways to go, but they came home with the honor of having the club of the year for their size group. And it's very easy, if you look or talk to any of them in the club, you'll see why they are so progressive in what they do, and amazingly, I don't know how they get so much time to do their projects, but they're very effective in whatever they do, and they did win the state club of the year. So, congratulations to the women's club. Also, I want to announce that this week, the drama club was very busy last week participating in the shooting, but I also wanted to let them know that this week is a Landfair musical production of Bullets Over Broadway. It's a Woody Allen production, and I hope you can please take time to go and see it because they are just a fantastic group, led by Judy Lewis and so many parents that stay involved with the group. The performances are going to be on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and I know that Mrs. Lewis wanted to mention that there are kind of like a GP rating for those nights, but on Sunday, they're going to have another performance in the afternoon where you can bring all the children. They're going to clean up the language a little bit, and so you'll be able to, to go there without any problems. Once again, they work hard and they earn all their praises, definitely. And speaking of earning praises, there's a special man in my life that's been around for over 21 years, and he is celebrating his 85th birthday today, and I know most people are very surprised to see, you know, he's just hale and hearty and always enthusiastic about doing everything, but I want to say a special thank you, and a lot of love to my husband, Jack Scott, who is 85 years old today. He's lived for, we did a little quiz, and he's lived for 31,000, over 31,000 days, and I think every day has been a great one, and, and he has so many friends, everybody loves him, so, including me, and I'm the lucky one that gets to take care of him, so I appreciate that, and happy birthday, honey. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Corbett, we're glad you're back. I tried to get Bob's doctor to keep him out longer, but apparently didn't work. I should have bribed him more money. But I know, seriously, though, you know, in light of the Child Abuse Awareness Month coming to an end, I wanted to talk a little bit about this covert type of child rearing I think we're all familiar with in one way or another, where children are, like, kind of at the disposal of parents who feel necessary to hit their own children out of what I feel is a feeble defense of discipline. I, I would like, another request, that the city look into this issue in terms of, you know, what can we do as a city to support the rights of our children to take precedent in Madison Heights, and look into the possibility of having some type of ordinance that prohibits corporal punishment. In Michigan, spanking and other forms of this type of physical assault are legal. The section 750, 136B states that the law does not prohibit a parent, guardian, or other person permitted by law or authorized by the parent from taking steps to reasonably discipline a child, including the use of reasonable force. So, there's no definition of reasonable force. Amazingly, there's no definition or defined age either, right? Could be a newborn, one-year, two-year-old, four-year-old. It's all free game. I guess there's, there's, I'm certainly, there's case law, but in my opinion, there is no discipline with the use of force necessary at such a young age. But my contention is that no physical force should be allowed, whether a slap in the mouth or behind. To me, it's all wrong, it's detrimental. All the research that exists, to me, violence begets violence. It's my, it's time, in my opinion, in the year 2018, we finally rid our society of this cultural damaging our children, so then we won't have to have a month that brings awareness to child abuse. And I think even on a local government level, we can help to make change for the good. There's a quote that I thought was very apt, where it says, when a child hits a child, we call it aggression. When a child hits an adult, we call it hostility. When a child, excuse me, when an adult hits an adult, we call it assault, but when an adult hits a child, we call it discipline. So, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, of course, welcome back, Mr. Corbett. We did miss you. It's just, your voice is so important to our city, so thank, thank you to you and your family and, and the medical professionals who brought you back to this table. We have many more debates this year, so your voice is very important. I do want to thank Council for engaging the whole discussion of what we can do as a small little city to battle human trafficking, and thank you to staff for beginning some investigation on, on what we can do further. And let's not forget all the partners we have in, in federal, state, and county government. Congressman, as mentioned, he'll cooperate with us. Our Attorney General and Lieutenant Governor have personally offered assistance, and of course, the Sheriff and our County Commissioner. So, we do have partners in other levels of government who may be able to provide us some ideas or templates, heck, maybe some money, but, yeah.
Manpower.
Or manpower. So, yeah, please, if staff will at least reach out to those different levels of government and law enforcement to better illuminate our local debate. But thank you very much. I believe that's it. There's no further business before Council, and the meeting is adjourned.